Call this meeting to order February 28th. Another day closer to spring. Welcome, everyone. First item of our business this evening is the approval of minutes from our last meeting. So moved. I have a motion to approve.
Second.
I have a second. Any discussion on the minutes of the previous meeting? See none? All in favor? Motion carries. Mr. Shane, town manager's report, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Tonight, be brief. We are looking at asking your request and your support for a potential letter of support for a new solar project as part of the potential school project coming forward sometime this year. That project, the solar project, as you know, we built, as a town, built a solar field here at the old landfill. It's about a .64 megawatt facility that essentially paid for all the power that we used as a town last year and actually generated about a $4,000 surplus. So, and that doesn't include just the power. It includes the demand charges, the service delivery fees, everything. So what we did, our timing was phenomenal, and, but, the school can do the same thing. We, I have presented, Denny Gallaudet, Chair of our Climate Action Team here, is here tonight. We have presented the school board and their finance committee on several occasions, and now they have the pleasure of meeting some of the high school students and their climate action team. So Jesse, if you wouldn't mind coming to the microphone over there so the council can hear you and the people at home can see you, just share a little bit about what you just did recently at the school board meeting and what kind of support we can help you with.
Yeah. Recently, we presented to the school board, I think it was a couple of months ago, just about supporting what they've been talking about, which is more renewable sources of energy for MSAD 51. We talked with Bill Shane last year about the solar project on Drone Road and how successful that was, and we thought, why don't we do that with the school? And so we formed a climate action team, and we've been trying to push for that since, and we really hope you guys decide to go through with it.
So what the rest of the audience might not know is that Denny Gallaudet and Mark Secrist put together a, Councilman Mark Secrist, who couldn't be here tonight, he's out of town on business, put together a letter, and several councilors heard about the letter and said, I'd like to sign on to that, too. So when that happened, the rest of the community really should know that this is, this could potentially be a council item in the future. So, Mr. Chair, with your indulgence, if the council would like to have that on the next agenda to either endorse or to individually sign as individuals, that's fine, too, but where there may be two, if there's three of you that are going to sign on to it, we shall at least allow the rest of the council to participate, and also let the community take a look at the letter and, you know, give you some feedback if they think this is a good idea or not such a good idea. Because obviously, we paid, we paid initially nothing to build the solar field that we have here. We're buying our power from the people that built it, but we started putting away money last year, I think it was, Tom and Bob on the finance committee, to eventually buy it in about four years, and then we'll basically be generating our own power. So it has worked out very well for the, for the town of Cumberland, and I think we could do the same thing for the school board. Their estimated savings on the school side is almost a half a million dollars annually. So this isn't, this isn't a $3,000 type of project. This is a big project, so, but their solar field is going to be somewhere, I don't know, three to five times as big as ours, so.
The, I'll just interrupt for just a second. The interesting thing about solar power is that you produce kilowatts, and nobody puts the cost to that kilowatt. You, you produce a kilowatt, you feed that kilowatt into the, into the grid, and if you run out, you, you buy some back, but you're not affected by the cost, you know? So whatever the cost of, to power is today, regardless of what it might be in five years, that same kilowatt that you're producing today and that you produce five years has that increased value every time. So that, once you've paid for your solar system, you, you don't have to worry about the fluctuations in the cost of, of the supply side of, of the power equation, and that's really why solar power is so important, is that it, it, it allows you to buy in one time at the cost, and then whatever the fluctuation of the market, you're selling back at whatever the cost is that they're buying back. So it nets out, and it's, it's really an important thing to understand in power consumption.
So I guess I'm looking, and we're all looking to you, Denny Gallaudet is here, too, if you have any questions, but I think he, he wants to put the high school students on, in the firing line tonight. So if, if you feel that is a worthy item for discussion, I would like to bring it back in a couple of weeks and post it on the agenda so the community can see the letter and hopefully add your names for support to the project.
Mike and Denny Gallaudet kind of spearheaded this letter. Do you want to speak to this, Denny, at all?
The idea of a follow-on to the, Denny Gallaudet, 67 Range Road, I'm Chair of the Sustainability Subcommittee. So the idea of the, the power project that we did here on Drone Road worked out so well, I think smoothly. Bill's staff was terrific in this kind of innovative effort, and now we're up and running. And, you know, as you pointed out, Bob, the, the power costs this year have doubled in one year. Electricity costs for commercial, you know, commercial properties, we're, we're paying the same rate, so the benefits are quite significant. And so part of our climate action plan was to, one of the key points which you approved was to encourage the, the school department to do the same thing. They're very enthusiastic about it, they've had a full agenda, and it was great that the local high school climate action team picked it up as their project and presented in November to the school board who enthusiastically supported it. So there's a lot of people thinking that this is a good idea for many, in, in many ways, and Mark reached out to me to say maybe the town council might wish to, you know, get its voice in here, so I drafted a letter which he polished up, thank goodness, and, and that's where we are. But I, I hope you can support it. It's a, it's a great plan, and a lot of people are looking at it favorably.
Any of the council members want to comment before Denny steps down, Shirley?
Mark sent us all a text message last week and, you know, asked if we'd be interested, and I was so glad that he had taken the initiative on this because when the school were presented, I was, I was actually shocked that they had said they weren't thinking about solar power and the, and the initial costs of the, the school building, and I thought that was a little short-sighted. I was very surprised, given the success we've had with ours and the, all the goals around climate action locally, nationally, state level, even internationally. So I'm, I'm for a letter of support. I, I just don't want them to be offended that it's a formal letter, you know, because we have this dialogue going back and forth that, you know, we should say, hey, you know, we think this is a really good idea. But I didn't want to put them on the spot that night either and make them all defensive.
I mean, I think we asked, I think it's right, I think we all took pause, so I, I equally echo Denny and Mark kind of taking this and was really impressed, and I, I thought it really was worded in such a way of like collaboration of, it wasn't just, you know, we're disappointed, you should do it. It was here, here, we're here to help and here's how we did it and whatnot. So I think it would be great to put on the agenda if we can, just so that it can be more publicly out there of, of kind of what are, not only a support of the solar project, but how to do it and, because I think their response when we did ask was that they were trying to be conscious of costs, and I think, right, very clearly is responded to in that letter and making sure we're not being, you know, penny wise, pound foolish on this one.
I just want to commend you for getting the students involved. I think that's as important as it is getting the council involved, to be honest with you. I mean, I think that really sends a clear message that when their own students are looking at this, we're talking a half a million dollars a year for a long time, and it will never, ever go down in price, it's just going to continue to go up. So it's a lot of money, but it'd be money well spent, so.
Thank you, Danny.
I will have it on the agenda for the next meeting. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
All right. The next item on the agenda is public discussion. Public discussion is for comments on, on items that are not on the agenda. Comments are limited to five minutes per person. Rebuttal comments will be limited to two minutes. Public discussion topics may be brought up again under new business for further council discussion. Is there anyone here from the public who would like to address the council? Yes, sir.
Do I get a microphone or have to bend over for this thing?
There is one present. Can you bring out?
I prefer not to have to bend over if that's okay. There's one here on the table.
Can hear him up here.
They can hear you without bending over.
I don't mind speaking loudly. Thank you. Doesn't sound like it's on. Is it on?
Yep.
My name is Mike Doyle, I live in Portsmouth, New Hampshire. I own ThelmaToday.me, and I come up here to comment on what I've seen going on. A brief history, two years ago, once Jeff Porter sent out his ridiculous inclusion letter and white supremacy letter to the community, I had several people call me up and said, what do you think about this? I was totally unaware of it. So I came up and looked at the group demonstrating on the green and talked to a few people and thought it was interesting to see which way it was going to go. And from that point on, it seemed to have taken a very bad turn. Critical race theory, whether it's taught in school or not, but if the essence of it is taught in school, I don't think that's good. Some of the books that have come to light in different school systems, I wouldn't want my daughters, when, back when they were eight years old, to bring that home from the school. So these things have just escalated over a period of time, and I have no idea who Anne Maximowitz was until I said to the school board, I'd like to start this meeting by dedicating the Pledge of Allegiance to all the men and women serving overseas to protect our freedom of speech, and she didn't stand up to, to the Pledge of Allegiance, which is fine. In this room, I referred to her as an a-hole for doing that. At the same time, I said, I would fight to the death to keep her, to protect her right to protest like that, but I said at the same time, I'm going to point out that she's an a-hole when she does it. Now recently, nothing's happened since I got arrested at the school board meeting last May, I think it was, but recently, she gave testimony in Augusta at the committee looking at this new LD 1939, which basically usurps the First Amendment. We can't speak harshly about any of you people, if you're on the school board, if you're a janitor over there, that Jeff Porter, the idiot that's running the place, we can't speak harshly about you if this new bill, new LD passes. It completely overrides the First Amendment, which I object to. So in her testimony, she made the comment that somebody had threatened to steal something from her property and destroy it. Well, she was referring to me because she stole my sign format and changed it to a campaign sign for herself. Now, the chief of police didn't send her any notice of harassment, but I got one this past Saturday. Two counts of harassment, because I, I wrote her an email saying, you're, you're acting like an ass again. And I sent a very detailed report to the committee, all the members of the committee, about what happened when she stole my sign. I said, I predict someone's going to steal something off your property and destroy it, so you'll never even know it's gone till you look for it. I wasn't going to steal it. I didn't threaten to steal it, but she has now filed a harassment thing, have to go to court March 16th for it. Well, folks, this is a 19-page federal lawsuit that I typed up this weekend, and I'm filing this against neither the town of Cumberland, but the chief of police for condoning this, giving me a summons on a false charge, and I'm suing her. So if anything exists as a game where she can play jerking me around, she's making a big mistake. I understand that she's been on the phone a lot with the district attorney bitching about me. Well, maybe the district attorney will defend her for this federal suit, I don't know, but I'm taking both of them to court, and I'm going to give this to Bill, he can pass it on to the chief. I'd be happy to take any questions you might have.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here this evening who would like to address the council? See none, we'll get on to our legislation and policy. Item 22-017, to hear a report from the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board. Shirley, I think you might want to-
Can I kick it off? Yes.
Take this one on?
So as sad as I was to see Bill Stiles leave our council, his departure left a vacancy on the Prince Memorial Advisory Board, and I got the privilege to fill that vacancy. And I have to tell you, this board is incredible. They are the, perhaps the most active board I've been on, and I've been on a lot of boards, but they're really a get-it-done kind of committee. They've been super supportive of the manager, and the manager's been supportive of them in the last year at the library that we've seen in our budget updates, you know, it, but when I look at what the library does and what the library has capacity for, it feels like just the tip of the iceberg. Libraries really are central to our communities, whether you go to the brick-and-mortar institution or not. Allison started her conversations with elected officials, Bob did one, I was at both virtually, I've attended things virtually, there are connections to other things virtually, I'm doing, I signed up to do a letter-writing thing, legacy letters, where you can write letters that get added to your will so that your, your wishes get carried out. I mean, just all sorts of interesting things like that. We have Thomas Bennett as our librarian, who is an incredible historian and known all over for his work with Shell Midens, and those are, there are a couple of workshops coming up on, that he's providing for the public. So I just want to say that I super appreciate the work of this advisory committee, and we now have new leadership, but I'm, I'm going to save that for Tom. Tom has been at the helm of the library advisory committee for nine years, and he is stepping aside, he's still staying on the committee, but he's stepping aside, and I'll ask you to introduce the, the new people. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much. As, as I've been introduced, I'm Tom Foley. Before we begin our presentation, as outgoing Chair of the Prince Memorial Library Advisory Board, I want to thank our town manager, our town council, Thomas Bennett, our library director, Elizabeth Manning, Assistant Director, and the library staff for the support that the advisory board has received during my three terms as Chair. I also want to thank Eli Rivers and Trudy Dribner, who have served as Vice Chair and Secretary, and former Council Bill Stiles for his work as Council Liaison. Special thanks go to Linda Draper, who has been a valuable talent scout and recruiter in helping us fill vacancies to our board, and to our board members for the time and efforts that they've advanced the importance of the library to the citizens of Cumberland and North Yarmouth. Much was accomplished under difficult conditions caused by the COVID-19 pandemic, and anybody who has visited the library has seen that they were very inventive and have made the, the library work very efficiently despite these difficult conditions. Your new advisory board officers are Paul Dexter, Chair, Jill O'Connor, Vice Chair, and Kelly Byrne, Secretary. I know they will receive your full support and further advance the programs and services that make the Prince Memorial Library such an important resource for our communities. Thank you very much. Paul, Jill?
Thank you, Tom. Is it preferable that we take off our masks for-
It's, I think it's easier to hear you.
Okay, okay. All right, thank you. So I'm Jill O'Connor, I live in Cumberland, and I, I don't know how long I've been on the board. Time is, you know, irrelevant now with COVID, but I got on the board, and when I got on the board, of course, it was pre-COVID, and we met a few times, and then COVID happened, and we had to shift virtually. But one of the things that we realized in, just in talking about our role and how we could support the library and how we could advocate for and cheerlead this wonderful institution, was that we could, at the end of, at the beginning of every year, give you a bit of a snapshot about what it is that this library has done for this community over the last year. So that is, we, so we prepared, so I'm going to start, and then Paul will, will pick up halfway through, and we're just going to kind of go through what, I mean, this is one of my favorite things to talk about as libraries. I'm also a librarian at another library, so like talking about libraries is my favorite thing to do. I will try to not talk too fast, because I tend to do that, because I get really excited. But just to start off, this is your, as Tom mentioned, Thomas Bennett is the library director, and Elizabeth Manning is the Assistant Director, but of course, there's a wonderful staff there, and if you've been into the library, you know that they are all friendly, they're all doing so many things, creating so many programs, figuring out ways to get people their materials, get people services, and, you know, innovate and create new programs despite, you know, some of the hardships over the last year. So this is the staff of the library at this time. We also have, we just wanted to say, this is the library advisory board on the left-hand side of the screen, and on the right-hand side is the Friends. We have a great Friends group for this library, they are super supportive of the, of the work and help give us, give some funding for some, some fun programs or things that are happening in the library. So we just wanted to start off by, you know, recognizing and thanking everyone who, you know, does this work and supports this, and, and we hope in the next year, coming years, to get more people involved in being a friend of the library. So part one, highlights, that's me. So we'll start with a, with a chart, with a, with a fun chart, that is just showing that the visits to the library, of course, during the pandemic, when part of the, you know, we couldn't go in, were, were obviously down, but we are really on an upswing. I mean, more people are coming back through the doors, we're getting back to the numbers of pre-COVID days, so people are, you know, are coming to the library and using it. We'll also just say that, who doesn't think of summer reading when they think of the library, especially if you have kids in this town, which I'm thinking that a lot of people have kids in these two towns, a lot of people are using the library, and more are moving in every day, which we'll talk about later. So the summer reading program this past year had 356 participants in the grades pre-K to sixth grade. They read 270,959 minutes. I mean, really. And the participation, of course, increased. Kelly Greenley, who, you know, has been the children's librarian this past year, said that is 70, 75% increase over 2019. We didn't compare it to 2020 because 2020 was a mess, a hot mess. So, so it's pretty good. Kids read for more than 4,500 hours, and so that translates to an average of 14 hours of reading per child who signed up. So she also did a raffle ticket, raffle tickets, you could, for things that you read, you got raffle tickets, and there were these cool prizes that were donated by the Friends. So there's another way that that collaboration enhances the already working programs of the library. And there are some wonderful quotes that we had to include, you know, thank you so much, right, people were looking, are looking for ways to engage, kids had fun, and, and we have excited kids to read more. We also have, there was also a group of kids from seventh to 12th grade, 99 participants. I mean, getting anyone over the age of, you know, 11 or 12 in the, in the library can be tricky. They get really wrapped up in their own lives, and they don't always remember to actually go to the library and do programs and read. So, so it's pretty good. She gave out 232 scratch tickets, so all you had to do was show up in the library and you got a scratch ticket, and again, it went toward these, these, went toward these prizes. So there were actually kids who went a couple times a week in order to procure those tickets. So it was pretty neat, and there's another great quote, I struggled to get my kids to sit and read, but they were pretty excited about the prizes, and so they were motivated. You know, we, we work with what we have. Some kids are motivated by a really good book, and some kids are motivated by a really cool prize, so, you know. So, and around summer reading, in addition to and around, despite not being open for in-person programming, right, we had to head outside. So outdoor storytime happened, it was great, in local parks and the nature trails, people had a great time doing outside storytime, and then the star party, I had to mention because, thank you, nature, it was postponed three times, and the third time, when they finally did it, it was a beautiful night, but it was cloudy. So it was okay, because the astronomers were there, and we had this wonderful Edward Gleason, who is the astronomer at the Southworth Planetarium in Portland, he is a wealth of knowledge, and he's amazing, and he can answer any question, including, what's your favorite star? Which, don't ask me what it was, but kids asked, and it was great. Kelly read some stories, people had ice cream, there were, you know, 75, 100 people gathered on at Twinbrook, you know, looking up. It was neat. So, so nature walks, of course, they, we've been partnering, the library also has been really great about looking at other ways that they can leverage some of the, obviously, our nature trails in this, in these towns, and in North, between North Yarmouth and Cumberland, we have some wonderful walking trails in the Preserve. So nature walks have been happening, and Nature Explorer, which is a partnership with the, the Shubin Cumberland Land Trust, and so we have, there's a naturalist who has been working to lead these nature explorer workshops, and so kids can learn about tracking and trees and all kinds of things. So again, what a library does, right, reaches out, we can't come in our building, let's bring the program outside, let's bring it to the places we have and leverage what we've got, and, you know, partner with other people who are excited about talking about it, and with those kids. Mushrooms were found that day. Monarch Release, there was a monarch release, so they raised some cocoons, and then they were able to actually go to Twinbrook and release the butterflies, so again, with a, with a naturalist. And then Stories Under the Sky, which was another collaborative effort, you're going to hear that word a lot, right, community engagement, collaboration. Community members from MSAD 51, the teachers read some of their favorite books, and people came, one of them was a costume storytime Halloween parade, so, you know, and using the, those cool stairs that some people are cranky about, but I think they're neat, that they built them, this wonderful opportunity for outside classroom kind of space, and people sat on them and listened to stories, so. And then, if not outside, you were in your house. So Lego contest inside, out in your own home, oh, one of my pictures didn't load, but anyway. And take and make kits is another thing that the library decided to do, and I will tell you, I, again, I work at a library, too, and whenever we give take and make kits, parents are so grateful just to say, oh, something totally different and something new, that a kid will sit there and open up this bag of all this fun stuff and get to make something. And it's just neat, and it's just a nice way to have the library come into your house. So virtually, of course, as people were saying, they, I mean, Shirley, you, you mentioned attending some virtual things, I mean, we had the Kitchen Crew, which was a virtual cooking class that Kelly ran, and I'm going to say my daughter did it, and it was amazing. She was so engaged. It was week after week of cooking something, and then they would get together and they would show what they had made in, in all its glory, in epic fails, but it was wonderful. And then she would have them play games around food, and it was really fun. So that was like back in the, I think, like March, and then she actually had such interest that she was able to offer a couple sessions over April break, too, so. Camden Conference, of course, the library participates in that, which is an outside conference that libraries can then bring speakers in, and last year in 2021, it revolved around the Arctic, so there were, there were some, some speakers on that. Race and Equity, Three Voices, and also the Changemaker Series, which is the new series where, you know, the, the, there's more community engagement to find out what do people want to talk about or hear about and attend, and so Molly and Dana and Dustin Ward were two, I mean, the Molly and Dana talk, I think, I mean, I think she said 173 participants, and then people have been watching the, the recording, too, which the library made available. So it was really good, it was very fascinating to hear like this perspective of what's going on in an indigenous community in Maine. And so, and so then the Community Listening Project, which, you know, this collaboration, again, school board, library, townspeople in both places, and what, what do people want? Who's listening? Who's talking? How can we be better? So, I mean, these are just, this is without the doors being open to, you know, people coming in and doing programs. So I have to show this, because this is like a foreshadow, what's to come when Paul talks. The arrival and renovation of the Historical Society, you say? Why was that important? Well, because when they decided to move it to the library space, the library, what we were gonna call a possibility of a cultural campus started to resonate with a lot of us, and we thought, maybe they should put it somewhere where someday that Historical Society could be part of a bigger space for the library. So I will let Paul talk about that, but it's coming. It's exciting. Few other highlights, again, the Friends of the library, membership has been growing. They have a good, strong support, and, and hope to continue to grow that. Passport processing is strong. Something that we always find interesting is that there isn't another passport location between Portland and Wyndham, so a lot of people come to Cumberland. And it's just a service that you don't really, you know, you don't really think about it, but it's, it's helpful to a lot of people to have a friendly place to go with parking, and, and a person who's knowledgeable, and 391 passports were processed. So, and then, of course, in looking at all these ways that the community could be engaged, and, and the collaborations could happen, they created this new, this new position, the Community Outreach Librarian. So there are more ways to meet the community where they are, and also, of course, to bring them into the library. So, so that will be, so next year in January, when we give our 2022 highlights, we'll talk a lot more about that position. But it's, it was definitely keen toward the end of the, of 2021, and seeing all these amazing ways that we could, you know, just, just figure out ways to get these voices out there and, and provide programming that people wanted. So, so that is our, like, that's just the down and dirty, what happened in 2021, there was more. There were books checked out, there were children who got excited about the library. There were people who got to have a conversation with someone when they hadn't really seen anybody maybe the rest of that week, and that's what the library does, and those small touches and those small ways. So those were happening, too. We can't capture those on a, on a slideshow, but they were there, too. So now I'm going to turn it over to Paul Dexter, who is going to do our second part. Thanks.
Greetings, everyone. Pleasure to be here. I want to thank Tom for his service and his leadership. It's a long time to be at the helm. I am a little worried. I was told he looked like me when he started. So I'm not sure what I'm in for, but I'll try to bring that same amount of energy that, that Tom did. I've lived in this community, North Yarmouth, for the past 16 years or so. My wife is a teacher, Greeley has been for the past 25 years or so. Our kids have grown up in the district, and, and we've seen the community change. We also have seen libraries change. I'm not sure what your library was like when you grew up. For me, it was stacks of books and shushing. That was the extent of the library. But as you've either experienced yourself, or you've heard from, from Jill's report, libraries have changed, the roles of libraries and communities have changed, and our community is continuing to change. You know better than most that our community is growing. We've got Cumberland Crossing, that's probably about halfway built at this point. We have the new schools going in. And when you look at the growth of the community overall, Cumberland and North Yarmouth have grown faster over the past 10 years than many of the communities in Maine. And that speaks to growing needs, that speaks to a diversity of needs, and that speaks to higher expectations among those moving into our community. Looking ahead, even before COVID, the library wanted to see what our community wanted. They were familiar with the library. What do you want more of? Three things continue to come up: more programs, more space, and that dedicated children's area. And I've got to say how impressed I am with this small but mighty library team, that they have continued to be creative before, during, and hopefully after COVID, in terms of how to deliver programs, services, experience, contribute to the community with what they have. If you haven't been in the library lately, the existing floor plan hasn't changed much in a long time. What is shown here in the lower right-hand corner is something that Jill mentioned, which is the Historical Society. And as she also mentioned, it really got the library thinking about what is the future of that campus, and what are the opportunities. It was kind of like, kind of like a pebble in the pond, where do those ripples go? So with the existing floor plan, again, the library has done a wonderful job of accommodating some of those high-demand programs that the community is looking for. In the print room, using that open footprint, so moving aside the tables and moving aside the chairs, and having events like the jazz concert. Sometimes they can accommodate programs, such as when the Lego Club was in person. Sometimes it's just too much, and there are conflicts with the limited space it's had, and they need to look at other opportunities in the community, such as at the West Cumberland Hall. So one of the things I've been really impressed with in my time on the board, which is less than a year, but really impressed with this group and talking with Friends of the Library, talking with Thomas, talking with, with Elizabeth, is their future thinking. And some of those guiding questions are, what are those ways that the library can continue to improve, increase space? How can they reach more people? And some of our community members aren't public or vocal with what their needs are, but we know the needs are growing in the community. How can, as Jill said, the library play a role in this local cultural campus for our communities and our residents? And how can we continue to expand access to our programs and services, not just within the walls, but beyond the walls? So I don't know if any of you have signed up for this wonderful new electronic newsletter that Kelly, the Outreach Librarian, that new position, has been producing every single week. And as you can see, there is a wide array of programs that attend to the needs and the wants of those across the age spectrum in our community. And she herself, when she first started this position, envisioned getting beyond the walls. She envisioned getting out to where the people are, bringing the energy, the expertise, the interest, the diversity of offerings for the library, and getting it to the people in our communities in ways that we haven't thought of before. And I love Kelly's energy and her ideas, and I'm very confident that many in the community are gonna get to know her very, very soon. And within those weekly newsletters, you can see how, again, we continue, the Prince Memorial Library, to foster community and meet some of those critical needs. Jill talked about passports. There's a new team leadership council. Having those students here tonight is just one small glimpse into the power of what we can do as a community when we can harness the interest and energy of our youth. And then Shirley mentioned the legacy letters, and I was touched that you put me in there, Shirley, by the way. You don't have to leave me much, but thank you for putting me in your, in your legacy letter. So for those who might not know, back in 2019, this is right around that time that we were gathering information from our community, there was a proposed expansion. And as you can see, in the lower left-hand corner, is that space that has since moved to our campus, the Historical Society, and looking at how we can enlarge the space, but also re-envision the space, how it can be one of the community spaces here within Cumberland and North Yarmouth, as well as thinking about needs that we might need to anticipate five years down the road. In terms of kind of a, a picture rendering that, that can help us get a sense of the feel, this, the time was the aerial rendering, and the courtyard rendering, if you were coming up from the parking lot. And lots of folks were excited at the time, and I get excited just thinking about the possibilities of how we can continue to partner together, Prince Memorial Library and all the other stakeholders within our communities. One of those that we've talked about, but does take some of that future thinking, is membership in Minerva. I don't know how many of you, about five weeks ago, saw the article in the Portland Press Herald about what the most popular books in the state of Maine over the course of 2021 were taken out from various libraries, and one of the things they highlighted in there was Minerva. And what Minerva does is it connects a local library to all of the other libraries in the state, not just the community libraries, but also the academic libraries. It expands the physical offerings, making over 6 million items available. And we're not just talking about books, we're talking about music, we're talking about audiobooks, we're talking about DVDs. And what the library staff can do at a library that is connected in the Minerva network is they can quickly order materials that very cheaply can be moved from one physical library in the state to another. That is one of the ways that we think about the future, that we can increase access to our community, increase access to all of the library resources throughout the state, without any real dramatic increase in operational resources. But it does take planning, and it takes innovation, to be able to make any of these changes. And the way the Prince Memorial Library embraces this is through looking for ways to expand not just physical spaces, but virtual spaces and human resources, hopefully you've heard some of that tonight, responding to the growing diverse needs of our growing and diverse community, leveraging some of those existing partnerships, and offering some of the expertise and energy that you see among the library staff, among the library board, and the Friends of the Library, to be part of those planning efforts for our community. So it's been a great pleasure to be able to give you this update. You can send any question directly to our director, Thomas, to myself as the chair, and you can get a lot of that information by signing up for that newsletter. So with that said, we did want to provide an opportunity for anyone to ask any questions or anyone to make any comments who are here supporting the library tonight.
Thank you, Paul, and thank you for all for coming, and Tom, for your service. You've been involved in the community in a lot of different things, and a lot of, lot of years. So Shirley, it looks like you're ready.
Oh, no, I, I've had seen the presentation before, and I've just, you know, the energy. I think you can feel the energy that this group has just in the presentation tonight.
I just throw a comment out. I had a, a virtual meeting last week with a number of other communities in the Portland area, and they all talked about some of the problems that they had with COVID and dealing with things, and, you know, I'm just amazed at how well Cumberland has done in, in dealing with COVID, and, and it's like we, we really didn't miss a step. In fact, we, we moved it, moved our game ahead a bit. So I really congratulate you all.
In fact, our library never really shut down, and there are communities around the state where libraries still aren't open.
Anybody have any comments? Mike?
Tom, I just want to say thank you. What, you've always been just so involved with our community, and you're a good man, and we really appreciate everything you've done.
Bob? Can I indulge you for just one second? Elizabeth, if, would you, wouldn't mind going up to the, up to the podium? I, I want to share a face and a name together, and just allow Elizabeth to kind of give you some examples of what they had to endure those last few years, you haven't heard personally. And Elizabeth's been behind all of them. She's been on phone calls every, every week with librarians across the state, and had brought back programs for us. And I am, I can't tell you, this is partially Tom's initiative as well, to bring an assistant director's position, and talk about hitting the floor, hitting the ground running. Elizabeth, you've done that just admirably, and I would love if you could share some of the things that you've had to endure the last year, and how creatively you got around some of the, I guess, obstacles placed before you, and, and I think we've shined as a library more so than just about anybody else, so.
Well, thank you very much, Bill. Yeah, COVID for the library was an opportunity. And in some ways, it was that push that we needed into, we knew we had to do things differently. We knew we had to keep up our high level of service, and we had to be creative. We were very lucky to follow Bill Shane's direction in the town of Cumberland, and, and the trust that he put in Thomas and me and our staff to do what we had to do within the parameters. Libraries are slightly different entity from, from other town institutions. So between the leadership at the Maine State Library and the leadership that we had at the town, we were given the freedom to be creative and solve some problems. And the opportunity for us was moving more virtually to programs, which helped us expand our base. You know, we have, when we have virtual programs, a lot more people can show up. And the way that we delivered materials to people changed when we had initially curbside pickup. And now we, we're gonna keep that. You know, that's easy for people to come in, and they don't go to the curb now. They come right into the library. But that, that pick-up-and-go for, for busy families is a wonderful thing. So a lot of the things that happened under COVID, that kind of happened under duress, we realized were really great service opportunities. And our entire staff, I think, rose to the occasion, and we looked at the way we did things. We did some things differently, and we changed our model, and we also changed our staffing. And again, we had the support of Bill Shane in doing that. So it's been a pleasure, actually. Thank you.
She's very modest. She's done a lot, a lot more than that. And I will share, I will share with you, our library has always been, we've discussed this at many, many budget meetings, the cultural center of our community, and they, they certainly have shined through the last two years and continue to do so. And Elizabeth, thank you for all the work you have done, and great job. And Tom, thank you always for putting the employees first and putting ideas in front of us that were, maybe we missed them, but you certainly didn't, and we always appreciated your candor. I think Mike said it very, very well. You've done a great job for us, and thank you.
Thank you.
So one of the things that I, I see, the comments made, is, is the change in our community and the diversity, and, but the, the one thing that you folks have captured, and others have in the community also, is having a vision, and sharing that with us. And anyways, your, your vision is appreciated, and we'll share that with the rest of the community. Thank you again. Moving on, item 22-018, to consider an act on the right of first refusal per the agreement with the Maine State Golf Association. This is a no-action item. I just.
The chair?
Yes. If, if I could, I'd like to take 22-018 and 22-019, and I move to table. I think that would be appropriate.
Second.
Second. I have a motion of second. Any further consideration or discussion? All those in favor? Those items are tabled. Item 22-020, to authorize the town manager to execute a lease agreement with the Cumberland Historical Society.
Mr. Chairman, Steve Moriarty is here, the chair of the Historical Society. Steve, if you want to give an overview, since you were kind of the architect with the town attorney that worked through this agreement, I think it'd be important to hear.
Bill, thanks very much, Mr. Chair, member of the council. You know, I came in tonight and picked up your agenda and saw those two matters had been tabled, which has sort of spontaneously given rise to a tremendous segue between the PML Advisory Board presentation and this, and this agenda item, because they showed you what, what the vision is for the future between the two structures and the two organizations. So I am currently the chair of the Cumberland Historical Society. And Bill, I, I think probably the renovations are darn close to 100% done. There may be a few things on the punch list that are not, but pretty close, I would think.
99.5.
Okay, there we go. That's about as close as you can get. So we're almost there. And, and you know, you know the story. We've been on hold for quite a while now. And the pandemic was, you know, was a big factor, but the building is now almost fully rehabbed and restored. We're poised right now to actually finally get back in there. It's pretty much empty right now. On March 9 through 11, the shelves are gonna be installed in the lower level. They're movable shelves, like we have in the town office here, so they, it's a great, efficient use of space. We want the shelving in first, so that we get our collection out of storage at Noyes, where it's been for quite some time. And it's coming back in boxes, but we need the shelves in place, so we can unpack the boxes and put things in their proper place. Now, what's that done as we get toward the end of the spring? We're looking toward a formal, public reopening and welcoming of the public to the facility. Well, one of the things that's been important, both to us at the society, and to Bill and, and his staff, and you as well, is that there be some sort of formalization between the two organizations. It's not, we're not quite in the same shape we were back in the days when we were on Blanchard Road, and the building was kind of slowly deteriorating. we were on Blanchard Road and the building was kind of slowly deteriorating. You've been generous beyond belief in terms of your commitment to this project and to the preservation of a unique and rare town asset. And it couldn't have happened, obviously, without the town's support. We're not that big an organization. So we wanted to work on a lease, to make sure that everybody understood what the rules of the road would be moving forward and who had obligations to do what, and all of this and that. And it's fairly routine, I think, in an undertaking of this nature. We didn't have a lease before. It was pretty much just a handshake and a smile. But we felt, and I think Bill felt as well, that something more was needed, given the investment and the relocation of the building. So, you know, I haven't met your town attorney, Ben McCall, but we've talked on the phone. We've swapped drafts back and forth over the past several months. And bit by bit by bit, we got closer and finally came out to where we both were comfortable being. And it was good with my board. It was good with Bill. And I assume you may have it before you tonight or have perhaps seen it. But it's a standard kind of lease. It just provides what the duties of the society are as the occupant or the tenant, and what the town's obligations are as the owner of the building, and by the way, of course, she'll continue to be the owner, and what the mutual expectations are of both entities. And we are just on the same page from first to the last, right from cover to cover. And it couldn't be any better than it is right now. So there's nothing magical about the lease. It started out a lot longer, somewhat more complex, a little bit of what we lawyers call boilerplate, which is extra language, which you don't really need. We kind of got rid of that. But happy to answer any questions you may have about the lease itself, which we're just thrilled to be finally at this point where we have it in place. And I hope full agreement.
I'm just curious. Your renewal is once every 99 years. I don't know why they didn't shorten it up so some of us might participate, you know?
I'm going to be there, Bob. Come on, aren't you?
I'll see you the second time around, Steve.
That's right.
Many comments from anybody? I wish you and your group all the best in their new digs, so to speak.
Thanks very much. Appreciate it. Look forward to welcoming all of you there.
I look forward to seeing it myself.
Sure, sure. Good. Thank you.
So this is not a public hearing, but if there's anybody here who has a desire to address us on this, I would be happy to listen to you. Anyways, we can move to authorize the town manager to execute a lease. I'm not sure we need a motion, but Bill, would you like some kind of formal?
I can't bind the town to anything more than one year. Only the council can. So that's why we're here before you tonight for this lease agreement.
Mr. Chairman, I'll give you a motion. I move to authorize the town manager to execute a lease agreement with the Cumberland Historical Society.
Second.
Moved in second. Any discussion? See none. All in favor? Motion carries. Thank you.
Nice job, Steve.
All right. Next item, 22-021, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a farm-based special events license renewal for Joanne Friar of Mofield Farm LLC.
Mr. Chairman, I move to remove this from the table.
Very good.
A second.
And a second. So as this is so noted, this was tabled the last meeting because there were some concerns about occupancy and legal, the sale of property, and whether who had ownership and who could grant ownership rights or rights to a... Anyways, long story short, the attorneys have all looked over this and determined that Joanne has the right to operate the premises for the three events that she has planned. And so if there is... Any comments from the town manager?
Just that we should vote on taking it off the table. You have a motion and a second.
I kind of got carried away, didn't I?
Yes, you did.
All those in favor? Remove it from the table. Thank you.
No, I think you totally summarized it accurately.
So now we would have to have another motion to grant the license.
I'll give you the motion. I move to approve the farm-based special events license renewal for Joanne Friar of Mofield Farm LLC.
Second.
Motion as second. Any discussion? All in favor? One absence.
Against.
Item 22-022, to hold a public hearing to consider an act on a liquor license renewal for Rachel's on the Green. This is an annual renewal for the restaurant down on the golf course. A housekeeping matter.
Mr. Chairman, I'm so moved.
Second. Motion to made and second to renew the license for Rachel's on the Green. This is a public hearing. Is anyone here from the public to... No, there is not. Any discussion on the motion? There is none of that either. All those in favor of renewal of the license. So moved, made, and decided. Thank you. Item 22-023, to consider an act on a commercial hauler's license for Bregia Sanitation LLC. So when we have anybody that operates in the town of Cumberland as a commercial hauler, they have to have an initial license to, so we know that they're basically have insurance. They're not littering the roads with refuse. And we have some record of who they are and what they're doing. Is there anything to add to that, Bill?
No.
So I guess I entertain a motion. Shirley?
I move to approve the commercial hauler's license application for Bregia Sanitation LLC.
Second. Motion made and second. Any discussion? See none. Call for a vote. All those in favor? Unanimous. Thank you. And the nominating committee has the last item on the agenda, 22-024, to appoint members to the planning board. Ronnie?
Mr. Chairman, Mark and I met last Monday evening and interviewed four different people. And we agreed on two. I move to appoint Peter Bingham and Bridget Perry to the planning board.
Excellent candidates.
Very good. And we had four very good candidates. I mean, it was not an easy decision, so.
I think they both bring some variety. Obviously, Peter's been on the board before, but it's good to have that institutional memory. And the planning board is a board that requires a lot of knowledge. And certainly, the other lady here brings a wealth of experience of her own from a different perspective. Bill, did you have anything to say on this matter?
No. Just Peter Bingham was just wanted to know if we could do a roll call vote, but that's okay.
Who is he?
I told him it'd be close, 4-3, but Mark was out of town. It could be 3-3. I wasn't sure. 3-3.
We did ask him how we thought he was qualified, if that goes.
All right. So Ronnie, would you like to make the motion?
I made a motion. We need a second.
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? See none. All those in favor? Thank you. Motion carries. And next item is new business.
Oh, I go first. I'm not ready. Oh, I'm not sure I like this seat today, tonight. I think I'd like to start by, I don't do this often or ever, but for years, I taught world cultures. And so I'd just like to send out my thoughts and wishes to the people of Ukraine. I know we have a lot of Ukrainian immigrants in our country. And my son, Joshua, that you all know, special needs, he's a news junkie. And he's had it on pretty much 24/7. So I'm a bit on overload from all the information. But we have difficult times ahead. And I'll, you know, wish for peace for all of us as well. The only real item I have is kind of goes in the yay small town Cumberland, Maine, because I don't know if you guys had a look at all, but in January, the Prince Memorial Library, in collaboration with the Cemetery Association led by Robert Story, actually published a digital book entitled Cemeteries of Cumberland, Maine: Select Occupant Genealogies. And he plans, it has, I think it has like roughly 200 people in it already and genealogies of it. And I haven't had a chance to actually dig in and look at it. But, you know, that was something that the library did with Thomas, who collaborates with the historical society and the people and the cemeteries. And, you know, it really does take a village to accomplish these really great things that make Cumberland great. And so I would encourage you all and extend my thanks to Uncle Robert. You guys all call him Bob, but I have never in my life called him Bob. Uncle Robert, thank you. He watches faithfully every week.
For the first time, our pantry was closed this past week. And it was unfortunate, but we did the very best we could. So that's all I have. But people did all receive their food Thursday night. So there were a lot of people that were behind the scenes getting that ready. And all the, I think, over 50 people had came to pick up or had deliveries made to their homes. So even though we had a snowstorm, it worked out okay. But it was a little, like Shirley says, many, many hands. And it did take a village that day, for sure.
Thanks, Bill.
Only thing I have is a reminder, we have our third coffee chat session, which Shirley referenced earlier. So they have been lovely. We're in the Solarium Room at the library, which is lovely, bright, warm, inviting, kind of informal location. And I know we took last week off with it being February break. And so we're picking back up with our third session this week, which will actually, timely, highlight the budget process for kind of each of the three government groups, and kind of how they overlap and kind of inform or need to inform each other. But I think the last session was equally well-attended as the first. And the community has been really engaged, which has been really nice to see. So that's all. So it's 8:30 a.m. this Thursday, in person in the Solarium Room at the library. Or you can go online. And there's a Zoom link if you'd like to attend virtually as well. And you can ask questions live, which is a good interaction.
I just want to echo what Shirley said earlier about the people of Ukraine. It's been breaking my heart all week. What little time I've had, it's been glued to the TV the same. And it's just, it's heartbreaking. There's no need for it. It's almost history's repeating itself. So thoughts and prayers are going out to the people of Ukraine. A couple of things, I just want to thank our first responders. Our fire department responded to a structure fire down 63 Tutter Road and did an admirable job, as always. And if you want to know why we invest in the equipment we do, there's a perfect example. So, Mr. Manager, hats off to our people, if you would extend our thanks.
Yeah, speedy recovery to our fire chief who broke three ribs at the fire vent, I think four ribs, actually. So he, you know, this is part of the job. He slipped on the ice and dangerous and never good situation. So.
It's awful.
He's recovering, but he's sore, for sure.
And I want to thank our police. They do a great job. If anybody had any question why police need qualified immunity, tonight's a perfect example why. I don't really need to say anymore. But thanks to our public safety.
My $20 for the 4-H food pantry. I do this every meeting. Another thing on the Cumberland Crier, if you're interested in storing your personal water, kayak, canoe, paddle boat, whatever, the lottery ends on March 31. You have to submit an application in to become one of participants. You might be lucky enough to get drawn. And that's all I have.
I forgot. I think I have Whitney's eyes searing into me. How could I forget to...
I was going to bring it up.
That our community survey is live. And so we do hope and ask that everyone participates. So anyone 18 or older in your household is invited to participate in the survey. It probably will take about 15 minutes. It is lengthy, hits on a lot of different topics. But I think pretty user-friendly if you're doing it online. Also, as a reminder, postcards are, they're in the mail. They're hitting mailboxes this week. So if anyone doesn't feel comfortable accessing online or doesn't have access to internet, that it would just be easier to kind of do in hard copy. There will be a phone number on that postcard where you can call and request a hard copy and then just get it back into us. And we'll take it from there. I think as of right now, we're a little over 10% of our target response rate. So we are chugging along. And again, just our target is 50% response rate. When we did this with, as part of the comprehensive plan, the response rate was 32%. And if you guys don't know me, I'm an overachiever. So 50% it is.
I too have to say that I, my heart goes out to the citizens of Ukraine and certainly the leadership there. Anyways, they deserve our prayers. I just mentioned earlier about, this was called Chairs in a Circle, put on by Greater Polon Council of Government. And it was an interesting group of people. And what was really interesting was those that weren't there. And that was with our surrounding communities, with the exception of Gray. And the conversation was kind of wide-ranging. I picked up some insight and some ideas. But it was interesting that a lot of the communities talked about problems with members in their own select boards or councils. And I was struck by the absence of that, that we don't have that. And at some level, I'm just astounded that people would tolerate that behavior in a select board or a council. It's just, to me, is, I've never seen it in all the years that I've attended county council meetings or been involved with it. And it's just a great community that we have and the way we go about business. Anyways, we talked a little bit about how we do problem resolution with people in the community. And the thing that struck me again is that we don't allow things to fester. We have a town manager that steps right up. We don't allow people to let the grudge grow, so to speak. It's dealt with immediately. You know, if people comes in with a FOIA request, it's taken care of. And again, I was struck by the other communities that they didn't seem to understand those kind of things. But anyway... Anyways, one thing that I did pick up that I thought we might talk about at a later date was, we talked about hybrid meetings. Most of the communities were not like us, who had one Zoom meeting and said, enough of that, we're going to meet live. But they did talk about the advantages of having a hybrid meeting where people can participate via Zoom at a live meeting. And I'm not sure about the protocols behind that, but maybe we could get some information on that, Bill, at a later date. I think that's all I've got. Anyways, great to be here with everyone. Next item is executive session, which, that requires a motion.
I'll give it to you. I move to recess to executive session pursuant to 1 MRSA subsection 4056C regarding real property.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.